So that was one thing I was going to ask if any of you would be interested in. So when we go over to the sewer meeting, they have a whole packet printed off for us. Because when I was here printing out all these pages, I thought, I don't know if any of you would be interested in that. It's really nice because it has the agenda on the front and it'll have like our first thing. Because I think all of us are all printing off probably well.
Seventy. I didn't print anything off.
I was gonna say.
Like seventy.
I started printing it right out of paper.
That's when you and Ellen.
I didn't have an ink.
Oh, yeah.
You can just read her online and have her print the packet, that's a good idea.
Well, it's so nice when you go to the sewer. The first time I went to my meeting, I didn't know, and I'd printed off like these sixty-five pages. And then I got there and they said, oh, you don't have to worry about printing them, you know, because they have them. And then you can just check off and you go to the next. So if you are all agreeable, if you want that, do you want that too, Ryan, everybody? Then let's start doing that, because I thought this is a lot. Okay, so we will go ahead and get started. Debbie, I'm sorry you're not feeling well.
Oh, thank you. It's just one of those things, it's not COVID. I always check before I come to meetings, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, okay, we have Kami with us tonight. So I thought if you have any questions on the budget that you want to go through with Kami, we can talk about that and then, you know, hopefully we'll have some time to talk about a few other agenda things. Kami, does it hold her allergies or something?
I don't know what it is, I'm sitting back here.
I'm sorry.
Hard to see, Kami.
Allergies and now I'm not sure.
I know, there's so much stuff, it's crazy. I've got my ear allergies.
I'm really so bad as I gave it, so let me get my sit over to hear you guys.
Well, and you know what, well, you'll kind of be behind us, I was going to say you can always sit.
You wanna come up to the table?
Because we don't have Brian.
We can just put a table chair over here.
Come up here, there's a seat right next to me.
I don't want a chat getting used to.
Well, I've got a NASCAR, I'm trying too much.
I don't know what it is, so I'm not gonna claim it's allergies or not.
So does anybody have any questions on the financials? April's financial disclosure you would like to talk about? Or the budget, whichever? Because we're going to, um, it's just, see, we have the A- April financial report that we're going to be voting on tonight.
You actually don't have to vote on it.
Oh, we don't, it's just for discussion?
No, it's just.
It's just for review.
Yeah, just for review, it's just for your information.
Okay, okay.
Some cities like us to go through it, some don't. It's strictly up to you guys, if you want to read through it and let me know if you have questions. And I don't even get up and talk about it, that is up to you. I am happy to talk about it, because I always like talking numbers. So, you tell me what you want.
My favorite page says, "Football City, ten months ended, April 30th, 2024, and you explained it all."
You like that?
Yeah.
We changed how we did that too, this year, this time, so hopefully it made a little more sense.
It just gives you a snapshot of where we're at, we're under budget and.
Yeah.
Anyway, you just kind of highlight all the things that are difficult to pick out, you know?
Yeah.
But I like that.
But these are the things you need to really think about.
Yeah. We kind of redid this, thinking, you know, maybe letting you know how much ARPA funds are left, um, letting you know where the fund balance is, uh, pointing out just a couple different things than we've done in the past. Me and Ryan kind of went through and kind of said, we're gonna change a few things. Utility fund, um, we broke out, you know, sewer, storm drain, and so that you can see, you know, what different things, and we may break those out into different funds, you know, going forward. But as of right now, we at least need to finish this year with the funds the way they are, so.
And we talked about possibly like a work meeting, I don't know if we want to do it even once a quarter, every other month, have Kami come and we go through budget things.
I'm happy to do whatever, you know, we thought that might be beneficial.
That would be good, that's also good.
Well, then we're not surprised or looking at it like, what? Where did that money, you know?
Yeah, and like I said, this doesn't even have to, the financials, it just has to be provided to you. It, I don't believe it even has to be on the agenda, but it doesn't hurt for it to be on the agenda. It's just, by the way, you buy the financials type thing. But we don't have to discuss it in the public meeting, we can discuss it here. Or we can, I can highlight a few things in the public meeting, it's up to you how you want to do that. Some cities prefer, some cities, I'm happy to do whatever you want.
If you did anything, I'd just read that page I referenced too.
Okay.
I don't know.
I can just.
Unless Ryan, you have some questions?
No, it'd be nice to have a little agenda, I think, yeah, let's just have a summary.
Yeah, that's what that.
So I'll just kind of more so just do a quick summary.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to do that, yeah.
Which page was that again?
Um, so I'm thinking probably I'd go over page one, which just real quick, you know, sales tax are in a good place, expenses are in a good place, fund balances. And then maybe just in the utility fund, but I can just point out where each kind of section of the utility funds sit. And then I can just, um, I don't really even have to go over the ARPA money, you know? You know, that pretty much gives you exactly where it's at, so I can just quickly, you know, five minute, less than five minute numbers, I'm great with that, yeah.
Well, that thing's starting in July, quarter to quarter, we really need to keep an eye on our utility fund if this increase were passed along.
Yes, yes, we gotta get it.
To see if it's too much, if it's not enough, if it's coming in where it needs to be.
Absolutely.
I'd really be interested if this huge increase were passed along is really what we need.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, well, and by breaking it out into the three categories, it will help with that, I think, too. But yes, definitely.
Have you done a pro forma on that to see what it looks like?
As far as breaking it into the three funds or with the rate?
Right, for just, for that rate increase, what it's gonna do.
Teresa did one before she left, yeah. So there was quite a bit of discussion. And she did the majority of the budget, I, she's kind of in the past not wanted a whole lot of me, but me and Sherry have talked about how we might, you know, do some changes in the budget process.
Well, I guess that's my concern with that is, you know, we came up with this number for sewer maintenance, and it was based on what Teresa decided.
Exactly.
And all the rest of us were like, okay, I mean, we're going along with what one person came up with.
Yeah.
Right, I have a little bit of concern with that.
Well, and like I was telling Sherry this morning, um, when we were talking, or it was this afternoon, sorry. My brain's gone. Anyways, um, you know, the other cities that I've done more of this type stuff with, I am more like, we sit down and we talk more and we get the department heads. And the department heads, like, different cities will have more department heads, and we, we grab from each other. I had a fire department that had a side-by-side and they needed a new one. Well, the parks needed a side-by-side, so it made more sense to take the one from there, put it here, get a new one there, you know? So people can work together as a city and discuss the need. And then also a five-year kind of plan, it doesn't have to be solid, it's a moving thing. A budget is meant to be a moving thing. But the five-year kind of capital project fund, um, expectancy. So, you know, going forward, I'm wanting to shift that direction more. Uh, as of right now, we just kind of have to, because of timeframe and, you know, everything, we'll just kind of have to back off on that a little bit. But, um, there's no reason by, why, you know, July 1st, we can't shift to three utility funds. There is no reason why we shouldn't do that. And then start getting, you know, Jared to come up with, okay, what projects are your priority? And what are they gonna be? And give us a really good estimate, same with equipment. I mean, I've seen, I've seen entities make money off of selling trucks every year. You probably see Roy Water walk, drive through with their trucks all the time down here. And they're always brand-new ones, they make money off that deal. Because they can buy them at state contract, sell them at more than they bought them for. Same with like your equipment, a lot of your cat dealers and John Deere, you know, various ones, um, they will come in and they'll give you such a deal that basically you're stupid not to change that equipment every couple of years. Because you're getting, you're literally paying like thirty-five hundred dollars for that equipment. And it's a great deal for them, because you're buying stuff at state contract and then they turn around and are able to sell it to somebody a year later for less than they would have bought a new piece of equipment. But yet they're still making money because of the state contract stuff. So there's, there's things you can do with equipment that is, I'll be honest, it blows my mind that it's even an option. So I think, you know, we need to sit down with Jared and say, okay, where are we at? What, what do we have? No, don't go spending hog wild. But you know, if you've got a nineteen-seventies truck out there that we're spending twenty thousand a year to keep on the road, we need to reevaluate that, you know? So I think, you know, there's some things that we can discuss with him and put together kind of a five-year thought.
Speaking of that, because I know they needed a new truck and we were gonna put some of it in this year's and then next year's, did they do, were they able to do that? Did they get a truck?
So I spoke to Jared about that today and he said they're still in those negotiations. I said, which was that you were thinking the bed or the truck and it all depend? But yes, I think we're still planning on that.
Okay.
So it'll either be the bed of the truck we do this year and the truck next year. But there was still some, and I asked him if there was enough money to do both, and he said, no, there was not.
See, and the other thing is, is like with your public works, you can also use, like, if you buy a truck that can be used for, you know, storm drain or can be used for garbage or can be used for other things, then you can also segregate that, um, expense. You can separate it out to all those different areas. That is an expense too. So, you know, you might buy a ten-wheeler for snow plowing, but you also can use it to haul dirt for water. So, you know, just the general fund doesn't have to pay for that whole thing. So, and then by having a five-year plan together, then you don't have the public saying, oh, you've got all this fund balance, what are you gonna do with it? You're like, no, we're not gonna go hog wild, but we're saving for these things. We can't always buy these things right as we need, but we're saving for these road projects or such things as equipment or whatever. So anyways, I think the five-year plan is a great thing. And honestly, as part of a budget, I like to see a five-year plan, your fee schedule, because then you just approve your fee schedule every year, it's just part of the procedure. And it's always up to date, and then your budget. I like to kind of see those three things in that budget kit, because it kind of goes together.
Yeah, but Kami's coming in Wednesday and we're gonna sit down with Jared, eight-thirty. Okay, he said, and then we'll start, you know, maybe kind of looking. And then when he kind of comes up, then we'll come back and meet with council and he can kind of make a list of priorities with what those projects are. Because it really should be that we have, you know, like Kami mentioned, the five-year and even ten, and some cities do twenty-year plans.
Yeah.
That they're kind of looking at.
But a five-year's a good place to start, to start with that.
Five years is a good place.
But, you know, and with that, it's your staff and maybe our recommendation, but ultimately it's you guys' budget, it's not mine, it's yours. So you need to have ownership in it and you need to feel good about it at the end of the day. And so, you know, my other city, I do, we've had three budget work sessions before we do the budget approval. And, I mean, the council's very much involved in it, so, along with all the departments.
One of the good things about utilities, I can't remember now which one of you said that, Matthew, was you, Ryan, said that, but that's one thing would be good to keep track of. Because some cities, I think we've mentioned this before, actually do like a three percent increase every year or if we only needed a two percent, I mean, they, they stay up with it. So all of a sudden, it isn't, oh, we haven't raised sewer for twelve years, it has to be a, I can't remember, eighty percent, it's thirty-seven.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to be in that spot, you know? And everybody has different views on how to manage things and how to, you know, what funds should be used here or there. And it's not that anybody does anything necessarily incorrect, it's just different viewpoints. But if we can stay up on it and keep on a good roll, then I think it's definitely a better direction, so.
Anything else on that disclosure then, Kami, do you want to run the financials?
So we have the financials, we have the certified tax rate, which the certified tax rate that the, um, the state actually has on the website is showing zero right now, I know that's not right.
It's close to zero. That's the question.
Yes.
Remember we were walking in?
Yes, and I was pulling it up, I can pull up last year's certified tax rate from my phone, but I can't pull the other up.
I thought it was on.
And honestly, Ryan has the login for that and he is out of town, so.
I thought I saw it in there.
Yeah, it's pretty.
What is my tax rate?
Point zero zero.
It's like.
Two eight?
Is it two eight now? I looked at last year's and it was.
I swear I read it in here, but. Isn't that stuff that John Bond went through this couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, he did, didn't he?
Is it on here?
Okay, yeah, I found last year's.
It's like you had a tax thing.
We may have to table that.
It's in there.
It's in here.
The tax rate's in there.
Is it?
Well, last year.
It just showed last year's.
Point zero 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 two eight four, I just looked at my tax.
Yeah, it says zero. Yeah.
That's a good rate.
So, okay, point zero zero two eight four, we can, if that's the one, then we can.
It ought to be close, it might have gone up some, but.
Yeah, so, um, but if you want to table that, I can get the exact number and then we just approve it then. But you can certainly approve it tonight, it's up to you, so.
Tonight, Monday.
I'd say just approve it.
Prove it tonight.
It's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's too late in the ballgame to do TNT, sorry. An hour and a half when I say TNT, because it's truth and taxation, but it sure sounds like a dynamite.
But might be the same.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, we have three, zero zero, zero two eight four.
Okay.
Basically, very little. It's really teeny. And then we have also the fraud risk discussion, or fraud risk worksheet, which is basically just something assessment, sorry, they call it the assessment.
Good job on that.
Thanks. It's something we fill out every year, the state auditor requires it. We're just more so required to present it in a council meeting to you as, um, staff and just let you know that, you know, that has been completed and where our rating is. Which, you know, is at three fifty-five, which is, um, very low risk. You see very low and you're like, oh no! But it's very low risk, so as an auditor, it's great. So, um, so I'll present that. And then also the amended budget, um, which is pretty much the same as what we talked about other, I believe, other than maybe, um, we had increased, um, some of the, no, we decreased the utility franchise, sorry.
Could you copy that?
Um, the building permits did go up, zoning went up or down. Subpoys, ARPA, we increased that just in case we did spend those funds. It gives us the opportunity to not be out of compliance with state law. Um, if we don't spend it, it's fine, but we just needed to put that in there so we weren't in problem. Intrust, of course, went up, everybody's saying yay on the, on the receiving side, but yucky on the other side.
It's not, it's not.
Yes, yes.
It's not in this one, I don't think.
And then the transfer, um, we needed to do a transfer of four hundred, or four point four to the capital projects fund, just because our fund balance is too high. And that's, like I said, we put money into capital projects for these bigger things, right?
So will that be as part of one of these, um... The budget, will it just be part of the budget? Transfer, because I'm not seeing.
It should just be approval of the amended budget. Yeah.
Right here, approving.
Yeah, so we're.
They're cementing the twenty twenty budget, so that will be.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we have, you have to approve it too, so.
So I think down here.
She's got it on there, sorry, I didn't see this. Okay, yes, okay, so yes.
Oh, I got it.
Yeah.
So how much is in the, how much is in your capital fund?
Um, right now, the capital fund is actually negative. So by shifting those funds over to the capital projects fund, then it will be positive. So we're estimating it'll be about three hundred and fifty thousand, or three million five hundred in the capital projects.
And that's money that hasn't, that's not the improvements, it's the money that's available to use for improvement. So three million.
Yeah.
It may, may be earmarked for something.
It may be, but we can't, unless it's restricted, we can't leave it in that general fund or else we're gonna get that finding again. So by shifting it over to capital projects, you can leave it there, because like we've said, the five-year kind of, the capital improvement's going forward.
So we have enough?
Five million.
Oh, I didn't, I was talking to Ryan.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're doing that.
Five, but when we talked about this, they do again, but about two million of that is our savings.
Yeah.
We maybe have about one point one.
Yeah, it doesn't mean you go hog wild and spend it, I know, it's because it's taken years to get to that one.
So is it earmarked savings? We, we can earmark a savings, I didn't know we could do that.
You can, you can, well, you need to come up with basically, uh, um, I, I'm not sure what the law says, but what I've seen happen is that people will come up with a policy for a rainy day fund or basically a policy of how much they want to have sitting in their savings type thing. And there's calculations, and again, that's a very, I've seen it all different ways. And so anyways, um, but I've seen people come up with that and then you just basically earmark it. But as long as it's in the capital projects fund, I mean, you can earmark it, but you don't have to, um, earmark it because it's in that capital projects fund, so you're not out of compliance. It's up to you. If you want to restrict it and you want to say, yes, we're keeping that amount of money and every year we redo that calculation, great, we can come up with that calculation and adopt it. But you don't legally have to have that like concept.
And right now, it's about earmarking.
No, no.
It's almost emergency, I was imagining something, who knows what happens, sewer will, I don't know, something.
Yeah, the only thing is, is it is in your capital projects fund, which is part of your general fund. So in order to move money from, you can move money from the general fund to the, um, enterprise funds, but you can't move money from enterprise funds to general fund without public hearing. So you can go the other way, but, you know, that is tax money, whereas your sewer hopefully is self-maintaining, is what we're hoping for, is what I'm trying to kind of say. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So, yeah, you are right, we could use it for the sewer if there was an emergency. But is it maybe something we want to do? I don't know.
Or if it's a sewer?
Yeah.
Well, but if you were building a, a pump station somewhere, that's a capital improvement, you would think that would be an appropriate thing if you wanted to do that and couldn't find a.
But it's in the sewer, it's an enterprise fund. So you, you could argue that is appropriate. Um, I'll be honest, I, as a citizen, I wouldn't be happy about it. Because I'm not on your sewer system.
Unless it was your sewer.
And that's my tax dollars. But you can do what you want, it's up to you. I have to keep my, my opinion separate, sorry. But, you know, that's, that's the type of thing you may see. I'm just saying, thought out, that's something you may see citizens upset about because of that type of thing. Now, does it mean it's something you can't do? You can do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, except for tax, like our enterprise, like you're talking utility, it's supposed to be you have a ten-dollar bill, you collect ten dollars.
It's self-maintaining.
It still is the same, you're right, it's tax, I mean, no matter what, it comes out of just different, but this.
Comes out of the people's money, but the, the idea is that you're providing an exact service and you're matching that cost with those enterprise funds. Whereas a general fund, you're, you're charging a tax to provide streets and those types of things. So as a taxpayer, I expect the streets to be paid with my tax, you know, fixed with my tax dollar. Now, if I'm a sewer customer, I expect my sewer system to be maintained with my sewer fee. And that's, that's how it should be, same with your garbage, you know? I pay X amount a month for my garbage can, that should pay for the garbage service. And so that's the thought process behind it, is that you have to do it? No, but that's how people perceive it.
Something like that with the storm drain, because we've been charging five dollar a month storm drain now for a lot of years. And from talking to some of the other mayors in Weaver County, they are charging more. And that is something we should look at, because in some of, you know, you always see that, um, thirteen projects that Jared had, you know, were just storm drain. Well, if we had a, we're collecting more from the storm drain, then we could be building up a storm drain fund that could actually be helping pay for some of those. Instead of us now saying, you know, Jared's kind of waiting to see which one of these fails first and then we take money from our capital projects to replace whatever fails. You know, all of these are deferred maintenance. But, so some of these things, and, and we talked about this too, and we've talked about it here too, that it would be a really good idea for us yearly, probably, to review our fee schedule and to just go through them. Like we mentioned, we, we do not have a road impact fee and we should. Because then that would have paid, helped pay, for instance, if, you know, this fifty-one hundred, then if we had a road impact fee, it would have helped pay for that and we aren't even collecting a road impact fee and we should. The developer, when they are putting in new homes, that should be part of it. So I think there's probably many we're leaving on the table somewhere that we could be charging hard.
So when we, that, that brings up a good question or a good point. When we don't use the stormwater or the garbage or the sewer and all of a sudden we're rolling over the fiscal year, where does that money go?
It's all been going to the same fund balance, so it's all been going into one pot. By separating it out into three categories, three enterprise funds, it goes only to that category.
So we have a utility fund that all rolls into in the past?
Yep.
And what's that fund balance?
That fund balance as of April is your twenty, fund twenty. And that fund balance is sitting at, um, okay, so we've got six hundred thousand is reserved for loan, three hundred and eighteen thousand is for loan service. Um, we've got two hundred and seventeen in ARPA, and then we've got about four, uh, about ten million unrestricted. So, I mean, there's funds to be spent there.
See, and there's my point, is we're talking about raising, um, stormwater fee and we've got ten million dollars sitting in there that we've never spent.
Because we didn't know it was there.
Because we don't use, we don't create projects. We got listed projects, but we never come and follow through on the project.
Exactly.
I, I think the issue isn't the money, the issue is following through on the projects that we have on the list.
So the ten million dollars is in the, in the process?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now.
That's a lot of money.
That's my frustration, to be honest with you.
So is it maybe part of the problem, we're understaffed?
Oh, hold on.
Hold on, that's what, that's what we were waiting for.
I'm like, that doesn't look right, okay. So the fund has, the utility fund has two point seven, two million seven hundred in unrestricted cash. Yeah, now, is there?
How many of these projects could we do with two point seven, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. And that's where we need to sit.
Let's get it, let's get out of here.
Yeah, well, exactly, I agree a hundred percent.
And Kami and I talked about this today, so we're solely going off of the increase in utilities based on what Teresa figured out. And Teresa was excellent.
She's awesome, yes.
So, but we, we don't know. And so that's a question, I guess, we have to decide tonight because she already figured in the cost of those increase to come up with the budget that you have tonight. But, but we don't know. And when she went through and figured it up, and I think even when Ryan reviewed it, I think.
Ryan, I know when we both, when we all looked at her sheets, it made sense. We were all like, yeah, what you've got here makes sense. But I can't say I calculated it, no.
True.
And, you know, so I'm going off of what she had, Teresa's great, and she did some great worksheets. But it's your decision whether, you know, you want to, um, basically, we do have to approve a budget tonight. But you could approve the budget saying, going back without those increases and approve the budget.
For a different reason.
Mm-hmm, you can do that, the budget I have presented.
That's not the plan tonight, I mean.
I don't, that wasn't my knowledge as of coming to this meeting. I thought the plan was to approve those budget, those, uh, dollar amounts, but.
We can approve that, right?
I mean, it can be amended, so.
Absolutely, your budget is as fluid as you want to make it, it is your budget.
I don't see making it any more problematic than it, you know, just approved tonight.
So after quarter one, when we look at the numbers, in September or whatever, we can say, holy cow, we got all this money we shouldn't be collecting.
Yeah, yeah, but hopefully maybe by then we've sat down with Jared and we have an idea of a five-year plan and we can say, yes, we do need that, or, you know, but we can all be on the same page.
Yeah, that would be good.
I think, I think there's a lot of good that can be done at this point with. I think, I think there's a lot of good that can be done at this point with, you know, unfortunately, I didn't have a whole lot of involvement with the budget because.
I was at it then.
Wasn't how it was, yeah. And that was okay. But, you know, I have a different way that I've always done budgets. I mean, you guys all know I used to work for Hazel, we did budgets like I described, and that's how I've done budgets with everybody, and it seems to work well. If there's a different way we need to do it, let me know, I'm open for suggestions.
So can we add, cause there's probably a couple of things we need to add. Like, the three of us went to the meeting with West Haven.
I was gonna ask about that.
And so, um, just real quick, as far as payment, we can really not have to pay for it till the very end of the, when it's done, from my understanding.
Till the end of the year.
Yeah, till the end, end of next year, twenty twenty-five, you probably knew that. Um, so it went well, and I just, we just wished we would have been a little bit sooner in, you know, the process, so, but it went well. And we're never gonna be able to get it done cheaper. So I think, um, I think you suggested it too, is we break it up in a couple of years. So we need to put, I think it was one seventy, what was the number?
One seventy-two, one seventy-five, hundred and seventy-five.
I think it was three fifty.
No, it was, there's three hundred and.
It was two hundred and fifty thousand and fifty and forty.
That's where we're coming up with the one seventy.
So what I would recommend doing is when you approve that contract, we also amend the budget. Absolutely, that's the types of things that we need to do. Because it, you, you can set rules now, but it's gonna change. Like you said, that, that deal is gonna come up, and you're gonna say, we need to do it, you know?
And that expense would come out of the capital improvement fund, cause that's what it is.
Um, yeah, unless there is like some moving of some storm drain pipes, or moving of sewer pipes, um, you can allocate some of that to those utility funds. So if you're, you're doing like a joint project, which oftentimes will happen, that you move a road or you dig up a road, well, when you dig up a road, you usually fix anything underneath it before you put that road back. That's, that's just responsibility, being your responsible person. So if you are fixing those things underneath and those are needed to be done, then absolutely those enterprise funds should pay for that. Does it mean, and so that, you know, a lot of times you'll see joint projects because of that, so.
And there are some, because after you said that, I looked up because of WACOD Monday, and I think they probably talked to you about this when you went to your meeting, but they did approve to extend it from the thirty-eight hundred south to the four thousand south. And there are some that say storm drain and utilities.
Then absolutely.
Yeah, and so, you know, a lot of it is site and street improvements, but there are, you know, storm drain utilities, some miscellaneous.
It could come out of several funds.
So some of that, yeah, could come maybe out of another fund, and that's, and I also asked Kami today how much was left in ARPA.
And I still think we look at whatever way we can to get it back from.
Yeah.
I've got that in mind. How, how did, do you remember how we worked the, uh, covering the ditch in the Rossom thing between them and Torgelis? Anybody remember?
Torgelis paid.
Did they pay upfront, or did they agree to pay when they developed?
No, I think they've already paid that, because they sold, you know, Torgelis sold that chunk of ground on your side.
So if they did that, we'd probably talk them into doing this, maybe, or some of it. It's not gonna be a lot. They'd only pay ten percent of the cost, or five percent of the cost. So we're getting a great deal.
Not Torgelis, but the new owner of the.
You haven't got any money yet, not one dime for that piping of ditch?
So if, actually, when we redid this part, we added that.
They couldn't actually get an approval of the subdivision until it paid.
There's a fund balance right there. So it's in the financials, you're looking at the budget.
But if we could do it there, I don't know, we can't do it here.
Yeah, but in the financials.
Sir, did we just add that?
We, we did just change, we, me and Ryan, we did all of this, so yeah.
Do you like air fees?
No, that's what I thought. And if you have suggestions, please tell me, I am happy to.
Capital projects, classy road firms, utility fund, what else is there?
Um, okay, so we've got, in the general fund, we have, uh, some class C of six seventy-six. We have, um, local highway of one point four million. Uh, ARPA, we have two hundred and thirteen thousand left in the general fund. And then, um, if we go over to the utility fund, uh, we have, uh, yeah, we have the two point seven. And then, excuse me, the capital projects, then we've got, um, let's see. I had a paragraph in here. The fund will be about three point five after the proposed amended transfer from the general fund.
Does ARPA money have to be spent by a certain date?
It has to be under contract by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So under contract, or committed, is what they're saying, which means basically under contract. And then it has to be spent by twenty twenty-six. So you have a couple of years to spend it.
And that was in the general?
In the, we have some in both the general fund and the utility fund. So we have two seventeen in utility left, and we have two thirteen in the general fund.
Okay, so did you hear what she's gonna do, or what they are already added? They're gonna put a fund balance on the last page of the financials.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we know what that running fund balance is.
Yeah, and that's part of the summary sheet about we changed to that, yeah. We kinda sat back and said, okay, we need to, as with all the changes, let's, let's rethink this. So I'm glad you said that, cause if I would have, yes, we would have added that for sure.
And I was specifically, we asked Jared too about that, cause you know those classy road funds, cause we talked about that, they get to the end of the year, but he said, I mean, it, it takes a lot to do a road. I can't remember how many million it is to do from here to forty-two, I mean, it's like a mile? And it's, I, you know, you do, you probably know Dylan, I don't, but it was like seven or eight million dollars, that, that might be. But he said, so they kinda save it up, you know, you get five hundred thousand one year, well, that maybe would do half of a, half of a mile, you know, quarter of a mile. But he said, if he can save it up for a couple of years, then he can actually do a road. And so that's where it goes, and it does stay in those restricted funds because the classy road funds are restricted.
It'd just be nice to have your, your mind on that number from year to year to year. Okay, we got this much, what, what are we doing now?
Yeah, what's, what's our plans, what are we saving up?
What's our five year?
Five year, yep, yep. And like I said, that five year, does it change? Absolutely, everything, you know, changes day to day, and it can. So big cities, I mean, that changes constantly, but, you know, do we wanna get a good idea? Yeah, we, and we, we need to get a basis so that we can have a budget to start with. And then, yeah, we change things, so.
So it's certainly up to how you want to vote tonight, but we've kinda discussed, it might be, and we can discuss it more up there, of course, but leave it like it is, and then in July, maybe even start looking at it, and for sure, and maybe not even wait a whole quarter this time.
Yeah.
You know, maybe even wait and see what it looks like, even maybe.
But we, I think it would be good to also go give him a minute to say, I, I knew we just threw it on him and said, you've gotta come up with a five-year, you know, kinda plan. And we might wanna give him a minute, because those aren't easy to come up with. I mean, he can give us a guesstimate, but to get a really good five-year plan, you wanna have a little bit more than a guesstimate.
Right.
So.
Also got newer revenue sources that are fairly new, new utility fund. We've got, um, sales, more sales tax revenue coming in, and we've got now an increased, our utility funds.
Yeah. Yeah.
September, we just need to say, where are we at?
Yeah, definitely, absolutely. And, you know, we'll, we'll start giving you these financials monthly, um, maybe I present them quarterly, you know? But we'll start giving you this more mon- monthly. I think we've done monthly in the past, but, yeah. Either way, we're doing it monthly.
Um, one more, on the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget, so when we talked about employees, what do you have in there, is it two or three percent?
I believe it was, we ended up with two.
I think you made a motion for two, two percent.
I believe that's what was put in there.
So I, I thought about that a little bit, and Dr. Reed kinda made a comment, he says, you guys are really good at training people, and then they leave.
Oh, yeah, other, other cities love ya.
And if, and if you look, if you look at, um, I mean, I think one of our biggest vulnerabilities is losing people, like we lost Brian. You know, everyone's replaceable, but he was, you know, he's gonna be tough. Um, I would like to change that to the three percent, because the difference, I think it was twenty-six, twenty-six thousand up to like thirty-five, and if we have to, we're renting this house, um, we take the proceeds of that and put it in, that would cover half of it. So I think it's really important we take care of them as best we can.
We talked about that two years ago.
That's right.
And then the huge increase two years ago, to bring them up to speed with what everybody else was at.
But they still.
Yeah, but so did everybody else.
Yeah, but, but that only brought them up like the bottom of the barrel.
Yeah.
They were still like at the, the very bottom. And I think just the gesture is like, hey, if we're gonna stick up for them, they're gonna stick up for us.
And, you know, having worked for a city, if you have a council that's behind you, you are willing, as an employee, to take a little bit more.
Sure.
If, if you've got a council that's got your back, you know? And, and that, as an employee, is huge. Once you don't have a council that has your back, as an employee, you usually don't see that state as long.
We also talked last time too about the insurance had gone up, which was about a three percent increase for most employees. So I think maybe that was one thing we've kinda talked about, but is that something, though, that would have to be amended, Reed? Because we made a motion for that last time, and it's not on our agenda.
Can you do it that quickly or not?
Um, I can't change it right now. I would say that you probably approve what we have, um, that would be the better option. And then, you know, we come back and we say, okay, we're gonna do additional amendment with this increase. And this is how we've done funds. And like I said, an amendment is a perfect, you know?
Your vote too, but that's, that's my thoughts.
Do you think we could even wait maybe till September, when we're looking at everything, would be a good time?
Absolutely.
Cause September, we'll probably be doing some amendments already, correct? We may be amending for half of the fifty-one hundred project, or I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, and, I mean, there's always the opportunity to that, you know, you, at that point, you have, you know, come together and you've gotten some more revenue and stuff, and you reevaluate what staffing you've got, you know, and everything, so. It, it, by waiting till September, it would probably give the better opportunity to make that decision more educated. But just the fact that you're willing to entertain that, you know, put it out to the employees, that your, your intention is to, you know, change that. And don't be afraid to, you know, talk to people about it.
We gotta do something.
Well, and there were some things we talked about, um, already with Jared, because we still don't have a road supervisor, which we haven't had now, I think it's been four or five years, I think. Um, so we talked about bumping some money into that salary to increase that. I know we need another Public Works, because Jared's mentioned that we need someone else to help with sewer, because right now we pretty much have Darren. Um, Morgan, we've been talking to, and I mentioned this to Kami today, about possibly hiring another part-time person in the office as an administrative assistant, because we have some coverage, like, for example, cemetery, we don't have cemetery coverage the whole day. So maybe by September, that would kind of, and hopefully by then, we'd have some of these, um, things, you know? Jared and I are going to have the discussion Monday, and then we'll get back about hiring another engineer, going back to, you know, J U V, which we've had, did have for a number of years, and, but anyway, thus, we don't know yet.
Yeah, so there's some things that have been thrown on us since the budget process started, by all means. And maybe September, we just plan to, yeah, we're gonna reevaluate the whole budget and reamend it. And we just know that, and we're gonna put all these additional things in there, and that's fine, we are allowed to do that.
So, okay, any other questions on the budget or anything? Bryce, is there anything else you wanted to tell us about the fifty-one hundred? That was one thing I had, if you wanted to, is that we're good?
That sounds forever.
You got to an agreement? There wasn't an agreement made, though?
No, can't make an agreement, this group has to make the agreement.
Yeah, so, but I think Brandon was gonna draft up the inter.
Yeah, we probably oughta get a consensus, though, and maybe in the actual meeting, because I don't wanna prepare it if you're not gonna agree to it.
I, I think it's probably the, you're never gonna do it cheaper when you have WACOD funds.
Yeah.
So is it just one side, side one, or both sides?
Both sides, they're gonna do everything. There's gonna be some temporary, uh, gravel put in on the West Haven side, and they've asked that we help them grade it out. We would need an additional, uh, crossing guard, so that's gonna, that expense is gonna be on us, because it's the, our, our kids. Um, so they're gonna do a, 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 part of the project is a stop, or a traffic light on fifty-one and four thousand. And I think they're gonna approve south of four thousand, like, hundred feet or something, yeah. So that'll be nice. Anything else?
Well, the bottom line is, they're putting seven million dollars into a project that's gonna cost you three hundred and seventy. That's a pretty good deal.
So next agenda then, on our next meeting, should we have it on there like it was last time, just saying to, that we're going to make a motion for you to draft?
Well, we'll just go ahead and draft it, if, if all of you are in agreement, you'll sign it once we get it drafted. Uh, but it, it'll be about, what was it, three hundred and forty? Three hundred and forty thousand is what it'll be. So if everybody's okay with that.
UDOT's gonna pay part of that on four thousand on the stoplight.
So the, so the stoplight is a million-dollar project, UDOT is paying nine hundred thousand of that, and Hooper and West Haven each pay fifty thousand. So that was, our, the two cities had it, well, each of us a five percent match, cause it was a ten percent match.
So we'll get going on the interlocal, if that is the consensus of the group here.
Timeframe, I think, is the end of next year, like they, well, uh, before school starts, I think, next year, that's their hope.
Yeah, they wanna finish in about September of next year.
Twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, so do we need anything on the agenda about that next, will this wait for you, let us know?
Well, the, the agreement will go on, the agenda at some point.
Just when you get it, you'll let us know.
I gotta get all the stuff running.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Okay, um, anything else, Kami?
That was all I.
Somebody oughta let them know, by the way. Somebody was at the meeting, or, or you tell them that we've talked about it more ago.
Do the interlocal agreement?
Well.
I'm sending an email.
Yeah, cause we told them that it'd have to come to the, to the council before we could commit to the money, so, yeah, it'll be told.
Okay, um, okay, so one thing I had, which we've talked about this a couple of meetings before, and I just wanna reiterate. So we continue to have things added on to the agenda, which if you go to our ordinance one dash one dash four, and under meetings, um, and I've just highlighted a couple of things, it says, the agenda for council meetings will be set by the mayor. Also in that same paragraph, it says, other items may be added at the discretion of the mayor or to council members. But this is the part we keep reviewing, and we're, but, so this will be the last time we're gonna review it, because it won't happen again. The mayor shall review items proposed for the agenda to determine whether all requirements necessary for city council consideration have been complied with. So you are fine to, I'm always happy for you to entertain things you want on the agenda, but like this says, they need to be reviewed first. So if you go to Morgan with things that you want on the agenda, she will tell you that I need to review them. And I will review them, and again, as long as they fit, like this says, they, all requirements necessary for city council, you know, one thing we talked about, which was also in this page, which we talked about last time, which, um, we're not supposed to be having more than ten items. And so one of the things we have added on the agenda tonight, hopefully isn't lengthy, but could be, which we really could have waited till next time, which has to do with, uh, the, let's see, let me turn that page. The final appro, no, excuse me, the temporary, um, pause on conditional use permits, which I think is a great thing to put on the agenda.
I disagree, I think we need to do it now.
Well, but it won't really have any bearing on the drug and alcohol, because they applied.
Maybe not, maybe, maybe not.
But it'll, it'll get things started, that's fine.
So anyway, but just so you know, just, just let me know. I mean, I'm always amenable to put things on the agenda. It's like we talked about last time, sometimes we don't, I don't know what they are, and then, like last time, we had that whole thing on the tower, and we had no idea what it even was. So, so from now on, they just won't be put on the agenda until I have a chance to review them.
I might make a suggestion on the items, like you got Larry Ropelot clear down at the bottom. I don't know if he wants to stick around or not.
All that stuff.
Maybe switch it and put him number one.
Just require a motion.
We could ask him.
Sure.
Just do it.
You probably oughta always do that on agendas, if you've got things you can move up for quick.
So Larry, come in, do you?
He's right there. Help people.
Oh, okay, sure, yeah, do you want to do that then, so you'll move him up to under action?
Larry, would you like to be first on the agenda?
Oh, I'd love it.
So he'll be the first under number, number one.
You don't want to tell, oh, stop.
I think that's a great idea, cause I feel bad if I don't.
So if I remember right, we have to have that motion made, so when we get into our meeting, Bryce, if you'd like, whoever wants to make that motion then, that we move this number G up under action items under the first one. Okay, um, okay, was there anything? Okay. Um, okay, was there anything else? Oh, one thing it said in the work meeting, we were going to review the city council assignments. And I think the only difference was, as we talked about last time, Public Works is just going to be over the traffic trailer to.
So why, why was that again? Why was that removed?
For liability reasons. So it's not a private vehicle driving a city-owned. So if we have a city truck pulling a city equipment, it covers all liability. So if anything happens, accident, anything, workman's comp, anything, it is covered under the city. So, and then, did anybody else have anything they wanted changed? Did you look through, I think?
White says border adjustments, and I guess that went away, so.
Oh, yeah.
Can you use the white Toyota to pull it? Look down?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we could use the white, uh, Snoopy.
This one is the white, white, white truck.
But just talking with Public Works, we just felt like it should be under Public Works, because it is a function of the city. Not, this was added on, this wasn't ever a city council assignment before, it was the mayor. And it started with Cory, because he was the one under his jurisdiction, and I think Dell kind of inherited it when he became mayor. And then when I became mayor, Dell said, oh, I'll just keep that. But really, it was more we've talked about with Public Works. And also, we, then we can buy, um, file that data report, then we can see as far as, um, we talked about that this last time too, getting some more stop signs and things.
The recommendations as to, as to where we should.
Yeah, still, um, so-called staff. And then, because she's under Public Works anyway, she works with Jared. Okay, let's see, fifty-one hundred, okay. Anything else anybody has that you wanted to discuss during this work meeting before we move up?
Did you get that email from the senior center?
Yes, you wanna tell that briefly, Ryan, to him?
So Weaver County is basically pulling, pulling our funding for the senior thing we have here every week. Um, so they're gonna, for the rest of this fiscal year, or this calendar year, they're going to focus on five centers, which will be Ogden, Northview, Roy, Washington Terrace, and Riverdale. So hopefully residents will have to go to Roy, will be the closest one. But they're wanting to whittle that down to either four or possibly three centers, because they claim to have more money to operate as a county, which is, I don't know, we have opinions about that. But, um, anyway, if it whittles down to like, say, for example, an Ogden, Roy, and a Washington Terrace, for example, or Northview, um, they did say that they would work on transportation to get our seniors from here up to the Roy Center, perhaps. So we're gonna keep watching that and follow up on the transportation, because that's really, I think, our only hope, to get our people up to a center, have lunch, or to participate.
Well, it's a great place for them to go, it's a good.
It's a great center. They operate six days a week, right?
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I think transportation is a concern. So, anyway, they, they've said, in their budget, they'll try and work on rural transportation.
Well, that's good.
And at first, they talked about even us being able to go get the food, but then I saw in there, it said there wasn't even.
Yeah, we're gonna be.
Really getting funds for us to even go pick up the food.
Yeah.
From there. And so, and we've talked about it, you know, ours is pretty well self-funded, because the people pay four dollars a meal. And this is something I, I think we should discuss as a council. I think this is something really good to have. So this might even be something when we're going through budget, if the seniors still self-fund at four dollars, because I know, for instance, like West Haven, they aren't funded at all, neither is Riverdale funded at all. And so, um, like West, Riverdale has their own chef. West Haven, they go to Kent's, and Kent's will prepare my box lunch, just like a chicken fried steak or something. That, that might be, and so if we still had our residents funded on four dollars a week, and maybe their meals was two dollars more than that, as a city council, I think that would be something to look at and say, hey, we're agreeable to put in our budget, so we could continue to do this.
They did say, um, the smaller sites will continue to get funding up till July of twenty twenty-five. So after that.
You got a year.
So you get another year here?
One more year to figure it out. That's good.
So no more meals on wheels? They don't take meals to people's homes and?
Um, I think they're continuing.
I think they are, yeah.
Just have them list this as their home address, and that'd be pretty much.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, my gosh, there's so many meals going here.
We don't, we don't have a lot of people that come, but the people that come really do enjoy it. So we don't want to just say, we're sorry you can't have it anymore. And, you know, but the other option is right.
Kind of a social.
Because they would say how many thousands of dollars we would have to put into it.
I said, kind of a social.
We're not getting anything out of it. So, you know, maybe we wanna do our own. So, okay, well, thank you. Let's move up above then.
No, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Someone pulled up.
Sherry and Dale, I just found that. In nineteen sixty-three. I just found that.
I did see marriages.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a city council meeting on June the sixth, twenty twenty-four. We welcome all of you here, and we always appreciate you coming. Our opening ceremony, the pledge is going to be given by council member Flowers, and then the reverence is going to. Um, we're going to switch and have the reverence by council member Lox.
Okay, everybody please stand. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to be here together as citizens of Homer. We're grateful for this great community we live in. We give thanks to thee for what we have, especially the fallen soldiers that sacrificed their lives on our behalf. And as we commemorate, uh, had a little R T D day, we give thanks to thee for those brave men. Ask that thy blessings would be upon our law enforcement and our first responders, plus them, also bless our families and the leaders of this, uh, community that will make wise decisions. And we say to somebody, maybe it's Christ.
Thank you. As far as upcoming events, we don't really have any, other than our pepper tomato days that is coming. But I did want to give a shout out to our youth council. They're under the direction, at least in Northrup. Our advisors are Shay Hall and Cindy Bammott, and they were out there in the heat pulling weeds. And also, we have some startups that like to live in our posts coming in. And so they were trying to clean windows and everything, so we really appreciate them doing that. So the next portion of our meeting is public comment. If you have a public comment you would like to make, if you come up to the podium, you have three minutes. If you will state your name and address. Okay, seeing we know public comment then, we're going to go on.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't. Can I make a comment regarding the, um, conditional use permit?
You, you can comment on anything.
I would like to have that.
State your name and your.
My name is Kristy Hanson.
And your address.
Fifty-two ninety-four west, thirty-six seventy-five south, over there in Hooper. And I'm, I'm requesting to have that conditional use permit put into place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else that had a public comment?
Um, I'm Stacy Sheffield. I'm at fifty-three fifty-two west, thirty-five fifty south in Hooper. And I'm a hundred percent for a hold on all temporary permits being granted.
Thank you.
My name is Harry Bernal. I have the same feeling, three six six two south, fifty-two fifty west, over Utah. And I want the unconditional use permits put into place as well.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Larsen, thirty-four sixty-one south.